All right, good morning, everyone. Let's call over to this Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for January 11th, 2021.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Howard? Chair Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, join me for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
All right, our invocation today will be led by Pastor Scott Dickinson with Michigan Valley United Methodist Church.
Good morning, Commissioners and others listening in. I do want to just say before I pray, I have appreciated the yeoman's work that our county and city employees have been doing through all the COVID and everything else, and I just think it's, if we could give COVID bonuses, I think people would be in line for them, but they've been doing some hard work, and I appreciate everybody doing their thing. So, let's pray. Father, we thank you for another beautiful day here in our beautiful county, and Lord, I thank you for our leadership and for their wisdom and the guidance that they take, and they've had to make some hard decisions in this last year, and we just stand behind them and pray for continued guidance in the year to come. We pray that as they reorganize today and do all the things that are necessary, that you would just be behind there, help them through those decisions. We're just so grateful for what we have. We do pray this morning, want to pray for our country. We've seen things that we've never seen before, and we pray for our country, for our leadership. Scripture tells us to pray for those in authority, and we definitely want to do that. But, Lord, continue to watch over us, keep people safe, be with our nurses and doctors and everybody working hard in the health field and all our law enforcement people and those folks who are just working so hard to keep everything running. Lord, again, thank you for the day, and just be with our Commissioners today. We ask in Christ's name, amen.
All right, thank you, Scott. Today is our reorganization meeting, so we would need to adjourn our current commission, and I believe we normally take a motion and then a second and vote to do so. So, would anybody like to motion to adjourn the current commission?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll make the motion to adjourn the current commission.
All right, is there a second?
Mr. Dunn, second.
All right, all in favor, just say aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned at the current commission, and we'll reconvene and begin the swearing-in of new Commissioners. I think I'll hand it over to Janet.
We have the Honorable Kevin Kimball on the line with us today, and he is going to administer the oath of office to all of the county officials. Today, we'll be swearing in myself as county clerk, we swearing in Sue McKay as Register of Deeds, Brandon Jones as county attorney, Sheriff Jeff Richards, and then we have two Commissioners will be swearing in, Roy Dunn and Rod Harris. So, we'll let Honorable Kevin Kimball take over.
All right, thank you, and first of all, I want to say congratulations to the ones that were successful in their election for this. I think if I could have Mr. Harris, if you could turn on your video. I know Mr. Dunn, you're just on the phone, so I will have you come in today, and I'll sign your paperwork in person later today, and now the sheriff's there today. Is Rod able to?
Yeah, I think he's, we were having some issues getting the Zoom set up. We were going to use the video over the YouTube feed, if that's amenable, but he's here. We couldn't run everything at once, it was really ruining the audio.
As long as I can see him, that's fine. Mr. Harris, can he turn on his video, please?
Well, I think what Commissioner Waymire is saying is that he will be on the YouTube video, but you won't be able to see him on this Zoom. If you were on the YouTube video, which is posted on our YouTube channel, you'd be able to see him.
All right, well, I'm getting ready to then swear in the new officers for this year, and I'll give instructions as I give the oath, and at the end, you will all need to affirm your oath. So, everyone would please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Roy Dunn.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
To solemnly.
To solemnly, all right.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas?
And the Constitution of the United, of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of, please state your duty?
And faithfully.
Faithfully discharge the duties of the County Commissioner.
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God.
Right, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and adjourn from the meeting, thank you.
All right, thank you. It looks like roll calls in order then. You're muted.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, now the items of business, the first of which will be to consider selection of a commission chairperson for the incoming year. Open that up.
This Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, go ahead, Roy.
Commissioner Dunn, this Commissioner Dunn, I'll make a motion to nominate Cole Waymire to be chair next year, for this year.
All right. There's a motion on the floor then, do we have a second?
This Commissioner Rod Harris, I'll second it.
All right.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Janet, I think you're.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
All right, we need to select the chairperson for the 2021. Any recommendations or suggestions?
Commissioner Dunn, again, I'll nominate Ian Dickinson to be Vice Chair.
All right, do we have a second? Second on the nomination for Vice Chair? And once again, is there a second? All right, looks like the motion is going to fail. Do we want to, who all be interested in what? Being Vice Chair, let's have some conversation about it. Rod, would you be interested? Not yet, all right. Well, Roy, Don, would either of you be interested in being Vice Chair?
No.
All right, Roy?
I was supporting everything to be staying the same, so I'd like to make a motion again to nominate Ian Dickinson for Vice Chair.
All right, well, I will second that motion then.
Commissioner Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Abstain.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes, all right. Next, we need to establish a meeting dates and times for our regular meetings and study sessions. Change anything that we've been normally doing, or continue with our regular schedule? Any thoughts?
Commissioner Dunn, again.
Go ahead, Roy.
Commissioner Dunn, I think we ought to just stay what we're doing now, where we're meeting now, and if things get different, that might be time to change, possibly. I like the way we're doing it now, Wednesday meeting and study session on Monday, every other Monday.
All right.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, it works, it has worked for all of us, but we might ask our new Commissioner if it works for him.
Yes, it would work. All right. It looks like we're all on board. Don, you getting it going forward?
Yes.
All right.
Commissioner Dickinson, once, one more time again, Colt, have you looked at the calendar to see how our study sessions would fall on holidays?
So, Commissioner Dickinson, to your point, just to clarify for the general public, our meetings right now are held every Wednesday at 8:30, and that's a regular meeting where we make decisions and take action on items. We have a study session every other Monday at the same time, 8:30 in the morning, where we don't make decisions or take actions on items, we only hear items for study, and we have a study session scheduled immediately following this meeting today, which means our next study session would be on the 25th. The 18th, which is next Monday, would be a holiday, so we would miss that Martin Luther King Junior Day holiday, and have our first study session of the new commission on the 25th.
Yeah, last year, I think the pattern that we were on for every other win, or for every other Monday just hit a whole bunch of holidays, and it looks like we got lucky this year, it's not the case, so. All right. In my own business, so I guess we'll take a motion in a second to continue with the current schedule for study sessions and board meetings.
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll make a motion that we continue on the current schedule for study missions, for commission meetings and study sessions.
Let me get a second.
Commissioner Dunn, second.
All right, Rod got in there for a second.
Mr. Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, down to board appointments. Go down the list, and we can see who's on there already, and we usually kind of make a tentative list, and then go back and make sure everybody has plenty of appointments and happy where they're at, and double check it before we vote on it, so. The first of which is the East Central Kansas Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council. Who's on there now?
This Commissioner Dunn, I'm on that board and also ECAN, and I'm willing to stand both those boards and also be represented on Lake Region.
All right. So, that would be the first and the second one, ECAN, the third, Elizabeth Layton Center Board. I'm on that board, it's not as a, as an individual, though it's not as a, not a position that was given to the county, so I can't, I can't give it up, I guess, I can't give it to another person, it's not mine to give away.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, I was, I was kind of surprised that was on our list, because that's not really a board position, is it?
Yeah, it is, like I say, it's a board position, I'm on there, but as an individual, not as a.
But I mean, it's not a Franklin County Commissioner Board position.
No, no, it's something that I applied on a digital basis, so.
So, it really shouldn't be on our list?
Probably not, no.
Okay, well, this is Derek, this is Derek, I asked that it be on the list, because my understanding was, oh, I don't think it was at this meeting last year, but I thought that this was part of an effort by the county to become more involved with ELC, given, you know, they're one of our community partners, and we do have a lot of interaction with them, so my mistake for putting that on the list.
All right, we have a Visitor Center Board appointment, and I believe that was Commissioner Howard previously. Are they still in meeting?
No, I mean, we, tourism has just, it's all but shut down during the pandemic, so we haven't had any meetings for quite some time. I will tell you, there, there are going to need to be larger discussions about tourism in light of ways that the world is currently changing, but I, I still think for posterity, we should put somebody on that board, but while this pandemic is continuing, I don't anticipate that board getting together and doing a whole lot.
Be interested, Rod?
That's fine.
Rod would be interested in it, or willing to do it? All right, don't hear anybody else speaking up, let's go down to the Workforce Development Board. This one that they reminded me, Janet, they want the chair on?
Yes, I believe so, and we just appointed you to that board in October, so you are our official rep to that board, but you guys agreed that I would try to attend those meetings with Paul Bean joining in, just be there to represent us, so we have not had a meeting to my knowledge yet.
Okay, the Lake Region Solid Waste Authority representative, is this the one you're doing, Roy?
Yes, uh-huh.
All right.
Commissioner Dunn, yes.
No, you're saying it wrong.
I said it wrong?
You're saying the Solid Waste Authority, he said R C D.
Okay.
I'm the representative on the Lake Region Solid Waste Authority.
Okay, and you're happy doing that?
Yes, sir.
All right, Neighborhood Revitalization, is that IAN? Commissioner Dickinson, correct?
That is, and, and right now, they're just sending it, we're just doing everything online, so that's not a problem to continue, although I, I hate to just say, Rod, you have to take whatever's left, I mean, I kind of hope that maybe everybody would reconsider and take some new positions, or at least, but at this point, if nobody else wants it, I would be glad to continue.
Okay, who's on the Ottawa Chamber of Congress?
That again has been me.
You have any particularly interested, Rod?
What else have we got?
Um. FCDC, that generally stays with the chair, I'm on there. We have the Ransom Memorial Hospital Board meetings, which we haven't been sending since operations has gone over to the Advent Group. I guess that's something we can discuss, do we want to, I know we've asked for updates from them, we've gotten one, I believe, do we want to go back to sending somebody to the RMH Board meetings? Again, with operations going over to the Advent Health Group, they're not a particularly in-depth meeting.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, have, have you been attending those at all, Colt?
No, like I said, since, since operations went over to the Adventists, this is just the board that takes the levying sales tax and moves that over to the hospital. We've asked for updates, we've gotten that one, and as far as action at these meetings, it's not a, there's not a lot of meat on the bone there. I'm sure it's something horribly fruitful to send somebody to, at least that I'd be interested in going, is there any interest for the rest of the board in going back to doing that? Don't hear any?
Just to let Rod know, this is Commissioner Dickinson, the chamber, the chamber board person, it's, they have a once a month meeting, but they also have often, especially when it's not COVID, they often have almost weekly chamber coffees, and so it does get to be a lot more time consuming than some of the others. Last year, it was not near as time consuming, because they didn't have very many chamber coffees. I could continue to do that, sometimes I ask for help if they, if the chamber coffees get to be too plentiful, but, or if he would be interested in that, that's a good way to meet people in the community.
This is Commissioner Harris, if you want a break from it, I'd be more glad to sit in that position.
Did you hear that, IAN?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, and like I said, that's a, it's a great way just to get out and meet people, and so if you want to do that, and just let me know that if there are any, that you can't attend, I will kind of warn you that the, the chamber coffees, the, the county representative makes remarks at each, at each of them for each of the coffees, so do you still continue to want to do that?
Is it notorious, did it scare you away? No, he's not scared.
Good job, good job, I, that, I think that would be a great one to, to really get yourself out there as a new County Commissioner.
Well, did you hear any, yeah, go ahead, Derek.
This is Derek, the other thing that I would add, just generally speaking, I understand we're making specific appointments to each board, but as I go down through this list, I don't see very many entities that would have an issue i- if another Commissioner just wanted to learn more and showed up to these meetings, and so for someone like Commissioner Harris, who is just coming on, I, there is no doubt in my mind that i- if he wanted to learn more about FCDC, for example, that he could attend, you know, an FCDC meeting. So, yes, we are doing the formal appointments, but there is nothing that precludes any of you from, you know, attending a chamber coffee, for example, or I'm sure ECAN would welcome another Commissioner, I just want to keep that in mind, thank you.
Definitely true. I didn't hear any interest on the Ransom Memorial Board, I'm telling anybody, back on that one. Speak up if, if I'm wrong there, Resource Conservation, R C N E B O, this is the one Don's on, correct?
Always on that.
Roy, and Roy's happy to be on there still? All right, Wellsville Chamber, that's when Don's on, Commissioner Stottlemyre's on?
I'm, I'm a member, but I don't have to be a representative of the county, I was a representative of the county.
All right. Of course, that being in your district, is anybody else interested in that position? May just stay there? Looks like you may be stuck with it, Don. Food Policy Council, that's IAN right now, isn't it?
It is, yes.
All right. Anybody else interested? You happy with that one, IAN?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, Prairie Pause, now this is the one that I believe Commissioner Howard was on previously? The Finance and Audit Committee of Prairie Pause? Who would be interested in that one?
This is Commissioner Dickinson, this, this could be actually a big change this year, because I believe that Melissa, who has been the Director of Prairie Pause, has taken the position of City Clerk for the City of Ottawa, is that correct?
My understanding as well.
Yeah, this, this is Derek, that, that is my understanding, and this, now, I want to be very clear, I don't know, you know, a lot about where Prairie Pause is at, but this could be one where some decisions need to be made in the next year, so I would just ask whoever we appoint to keep that in mind, that, you know, there, again, I know a thing, but just there may or may not be some, some difficult conversations that have to be had on that board, so just something to keep in mind.
Okay. All right, who would be willing or interested in doing that? Anything you'd be interested in, Rod?
Do that.
Rod, Commissioner Harris is willing, anybody else?
This is Commissioner Dickinson, do you know if they're meeting in person or online at this point?
This is Derek, my understanding is they have been meeting online, though historically, I feel like they met up in Gardner, I feel like I remember Commissioner Howard saying that several times, so, but my understanding is it has been remote since the pandemic began, thank you.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, I would, I would be willing to do that if Commissioner Harris feels like maybe he's already overwhelmed, or, but if he would like to also take that one on, that's, that's awesome.
Thanks, IAN.
I think Rod appreciates the gesture then, so I think he'll be on that one? All right, so that's, this is the bottom of the list, Janet, were you able to discern something from that?
Yes, I'll review these, what we have, so we have the East Central Kansas Area Agency on Aging Advisory Board, it's Commissioner Dunn, the ECAN Board is Commissioner Dunn, we'd have Commissioner Waymire is a personal individual on the ELC Board, but we do not have a county representative, so we're going to strike that one. The Franklin County Visitors Council is going to be Commissioner Harris, the Kansas Workforce Development Board will continue to be Commissioner Waymire, the Lake Region Solid Waste Authority Representative can continue to be Commissioner Stottlemyre, the Neighborhood Revitalization Group will be Commissioner Dickinson, Ottawa Chamber of Commerce Board meetings will be Commissioner Harris, Franklin County Development Council Board will be Commissioner Waymire, Resource Conservation and Development Board will be Roy, Wellsville Chamber of Commerce meetings will be Don, Food Policy Council will be IAN, and Prairie Pause Animal Shelter Finance and Audit Committee will be IAN.
All right. Well, that's all right with everyone, maybe hop in there, make a motion, vote on it? Is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
Commissioner Dickinson, I will move to approve the point, the board appointments as just read by Janet Paddock.
All right, is there a second?
Mr. Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, our fifth item is to consider scheduling a study session to review the County Commission District's reserve state statute.
This is Janet Paddock, and just wanted to let you guys know that I have had a discussion with the Census Bureau, and as you know, when we do these redistricting, we rely on the Census Bureau data, either the community survey that they do periodically, or the, the census they complete every 10 years, which is what we.
which is what we have just completed. So due to the pandemic, the results of that are going to be released late, and they have informed me that we likely will not have the results broken down by precincts or tracks until probably late April, or, uh, late March or early April. So I don't think that now would probably be an appropriate time to look at those, as we don't have any data that would be any newer than a couple of years old. So I think it would be appropriate to, not make any changes at this time. However, if you would like to see the data that we do have, um, that we've been relying on up to this point, um, I'm happy to provide that with a study session for you.
So do we wanna schedule something for May, or just, uh, wait till we get good information to, to go off of and schedule them? Janet?
I would, I would probably lean on, on Derek for this, whether this is an item that we, um, can decide not to do, or if we want to decide at a later time. I haven't heard any discussion about what the legislature is doing regarding redistricting. Like I said, everything that I have coming directly from the Census Bureau says we're not going to have data until lead March or early April. So I don't know if that makes any difference in your decision as to what our state legislative seats are doing, or in this situation.
This, this is Derek, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to look at redistrict, redistricting until we have those solid numbers, so I would say, uh, my recommendation would be to not worry about it at this juncture, and then once we have that info, we can always have the discussion at that time. And certainly will be, we should have it in, in time to, you know, take a hard look at it next year at the latest, but I wouldn't worry about it at this juncture, Colt.
Okay, all right. Absence of any good information, we can't make a decision, so we'll move, uh, move on. Well, that's the end of our, uh, agenda for today. Do we have any thing from staff, Derek?
Nope, just a reminder to stay on, we don't have a separate dial-in or anything for the study session, but all I would say would be to recess this meeting, and then unless someone needs a break, transition right into our study session. So that's all I have, Colt, thanks.
All right, thank you. Well, we survived yet another reorganization meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting?
Before we adjourn, can I make a comment? This is Commissioner Dickinson. Um, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, I have very much appreciated, uh, Colt's leadership through, and who knew, when we had the reorganization meeting in 2020, what we were going to be looking at, and I think that you have done an exemplary job of leadership. I am very glad that you are leading this, and hopefully, by the time that we have our next, uh, reorganization meeting, that we are meeting in person, and, uh, we are looking at a whole new thing, but I am very appreciative of your leadership moving forward. I think I asked you a couple of years ago, or a couple of months ago, can you just do this again? Um, and I am glad that you are doing it again, and hopefully, uh, getting us through this pandemic. And that's it, thank you. At that point, I will make a motion to adjourn, uh, this commission meeting.
All right, well, thank you, Ian, that's very kind, you did, did mention that, and I also cannot wait for things to get back to normal, so. Uh, there's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
All right, all in favor of adjourned in the reorganization meeting, say aye.
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 Any opposed, that meeting is adjourned?